Folks, let's get this show on the road. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a joint study session meeting of the Winnetka Village Council and Plan Commission on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ask everybody to either mute or turn off your cell phone or other electronic devices. And Rob, I'll ask you to do a roll call of attendance for the village council people. Thank you. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Kreip?
Here.
Trustee Mancini?
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Swark?
Here.
Trustee Dolman?
Here.
President Rents?
Present.
All right, both Brian or Ann do a roll call for the Plan Commission.
Sure, sure. Member Alt?
Here.
Member Case?
Here.
Member Danley?
Here.
Member Goldwin?
Here.
Chair Orsick?
Here.
All right. Item two on the agenda is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone from the public may address the combined group on items not on the agenda. So outside of Chuck, Chuck, you don't have anything outside of the agenda to talk about. So we don't have anybody here. Kristen, do we have anybody from emails or other electronic communication?
No public comment seemingly, President Rents. No public comment.
Okay. All right. Okay, item three is the comprehensive plan working session. The comprehensive plan project was put on hold in the spring of two thousand and twenty due to COVID- nineteen. The Lakota Group is here tonight to reengage with the Council and Plan Commission to continue our work on the comprehensive plan. For those of you who weren't here or were just coming out in the spring of two thousand and twenty, the Lakota Group had started in on a either a rewrite or a modification of the existing comprehensive plan, which was written back in the late nineties and introduced at that time as well. They got about, what, a third of the way through your engagement and
Almost.
and then everything kind of fell apart. So we're looking to get things back on track tonight. And we have Scott Ferris and Becky Hurley and
Suraj.
I can't hear you down here, I'm sorry.
Suraj.
Yes.
Suraj. It's hard to hear.
It is, but the mask is horrible. So
I know.
So let's all be aware of that as we're interacting with each other. So Scott, I'll just turn it over to you and let you apply.
Well, thank you, Chris. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time out tonight. I have my partner in prime here, Becky Hurley, Suraj Aspahani, with me. This represents about a tenth of our whole team of folks that are going to be part of our comprehensive planning process. Back in our office, there's Scott Ruland, who's really our project manager on the planning aspect. I would tell you that the team before you tonight is what we call the community engagement team. And also important in the front end, and that's kind of why we're here, because tonight we want to have an open conversation with everybody about where we were when we left off, where we are today, what we see ahead of us, new challenges, new opportunities, get ourselves on track. More important for us is to listen and document your thoughts and concerns. But what we want from you tonight, more than anything else, is we want you to give us our tests of things that you'd like us to do that research on. What are they doing in Greenwich, Connecticut? What are they doing in our comparable communities in other towns? We want to know that information so that we can make good decisions about developing a comprehensive plan. I'm going to talk in a minute a little bit about what a comprehensive plan is, but I thought it'd be good if maybe we just go around the table and have everybody introduce themselves so we're all set up over here.
Kim Mancini, a village trustee. Do I have anything more?
No, that's good, that's good.
Rob Apitoff also goes trustee.
Jas Swark, trustee.
Tina Dolman, trustee, former chair of Plan Commission.
Apit Dearborn, trustee.
Andy Kreip.
Chris Rents, village president.
Ricky Orsick, planning chair.
Lola Danley, member of Plan Commission.
Jonathan Wall, Plan Commission.
John Goldwin, Plan Commission.
Mamie Case, Plan Commission.
And we know that Mr. Dolly is over here, supporting the Environmental Forestry Commission. So thank you, Chuck, for being here. We've got, I want to let everybody know that we are happy to be back here. I want everybody to know that we haven't stopped thinking about the comprehensive plan just because we had a little blip in the radar in terms of what's happened to us over the last year. And certainly, it hasn't gone away because we're all sitting masked tonight. But on the other hand, we know better time than now to continue to look forward of where we're going and get our game plan set up. A little forward on our process, so we carry the banner, the little banner we carry with us everywhere we go. You'll see it in coffee shops, you'll see it, and you'll know we're talking to people when we have the little banner, because it's our way of letting people know that they can get to us. And getting to us and talking to us is probably the most important part of developing this plan. If nothing else, we can convey to you tonight, and the reason I have these folks with me is because the success in the comprehensive plan is in getting the community's voice put into it in an effective, positive way, making sure everybody's clear on what the issues are, they understand them, and that they have the information they need to make good decisions. That plan is developed from the voice of the community. It is managed by the Plan Commission in this case, and the Plan Commission brings it up to the village council to deliberate, to talk about it, and ultimately adopt it, to move it forward. What a comprehensive plan is, is it basically allows you to establish policies and directions and initiatives and programs to move the community forward, to make good decisions, in what we call a series of community pillars. And we're going to talk about that tonight, because we want you to help us fill in what those pillars are. We also want you to help us understand if there's other pillars that we haven't even thought about, that we should be putting in there, or topics that are really relevant in today's world that you're facing right now that we need to address. Can't pretend that we live in a vacuum and that we're just going to wait for all these things to happen when we're done with the plan. There's real things happening today. There's real businesses happening today. There's stuff going on in town. We've got to react to those. So we need to know from you all, what are the things we need to react to now and try and get ahead of, so we're not, a year from now, when we put our plan together, we're all done, that issue is over, and you had to figure it out before we even got done. That's not effective planning. So comprehensive plan is to put all those things out there and give you the roadmap to move forward. What it isn't, it isn't a design plan for a detailed park or the final buildings that we're going to put on any site in any of the downtown areas. It's ideas, solutions, and answering the questions of why it's a good idea, why it's a bad idea, why we have choices, and what we need to do in terms of a community to move those initiatives forward in a positive light. Now, there's lots of topics going on right now. We're aware of them. We, as I said, we haven't forgotten that the world kept turning, and we've made ourselves aware of all the things that are going on. And I think we've got some really great things happening in this town right now. Actually, more great things happening right now than they probably were about eighteen months ago. It was a different world eighteen months ago. And as my counterpart said to me today, and maybe you can describe it the best way you heard the conversation about what happened versus where we're going.
Well, so it's an ongoing conversation in my mind. The changes that we've seen so far is how many of those are going to stick, and in what ways are they going to stick? Because we know there'll be, you know, things will swing back, but how far and in what way? So I've been asking anybody I can find that kind of general intentionally ill-defined question and talk to somebody who has no relationship to Winnetka but is in finance downtown. And he said something to me just this afternoon that I had never thought of. In his mind, it's not that changes have occurred that would not have occurred. It simply accelerated those changes that were going to happen anyway. My eighty-nine-year-old mother now knows how to do Zoom, you know? So eighty-nine-year-olds would have eventually learned how to do Zoom, but she learned it quicker because of COVID, you know? So as an example, those changes in lifestyle and technology maybe just were a little accelerated, but not ultimately that much different.
That's right. So we have a process that we started, as Chris had mentioned. I brought where we got. And so I want to point out what we had done, so you all know what we're building from and why we need to make some change. We need to update this and refresh this. So our process is, I'm going to say it's probably, our goal is to be done in a year. Let's say a year from now, that was our anticipated area. We'll try and go as fast as we can, and we'll try and keep up with the times and issues. We know that that'll always be, there's pressures on you to board to do that. However, there are three processes. The first was called engagement and analyze. And you can see it on the little board that is right next, right behind me, that describes three phases: analyze, visioning, and plan making. So analyze is the front-end phase that we use to make sure that we set the bar for understanding of where we're at today. Where are we at with vacancies, building permits? Where are we at on our zoning codes? Where are we at on current topics with regards to sustainability and the environment? Where are we at on housing topics? And this document was a coalition of all of those thoughts of where we're at today. In addition, it was also a conglomeration of lots and lots of community voice and themes that were built into this. This we call the State of the Community Report. It's the first, basically it's the front chapter to a comprehensive plan. And it describes for the whole world the process you all went through listening and taking in information. As I said before, a comprehensive plan is only as good as you can point out that it was built on community voice and value. And community value is important. In fact, the operative word for our comprehensive plan is community. What is community? How do we build community? How do we maintain community? And it's defined many different ways by people here in town and by yourselves. And we want to hear that from people. What does community mean to them? And it may mean something very different after the last year and a half. It may mean something very different to somebody who's lived here one year or somebody who's lived here their entire life. And so that is built into what we call the State of the Community Report. It's the launching pad for us to move forward to develop the plan. We believe a lot of the data and supporting data here, there may be things that have changed by virtue of what's happened to us over the last year and a half. So we're taking a little bit of a deep breath, going back and looking at all the stats. I'm going to go through Ann and Brian and through all their files and find out how many building permits and how, what kind of things have changed. We're watching lots of things happening in this town. How many stores are filled up that weren't filled up last year? How many new restaurants are here? How are things doing? What's the walkability like on the trail systems, on the walking areas in town that weren't here? What's traffic volumes? What are the ridership numbers on the train station over the last year versus what we had? We want to update all that information. And some may be the same, and some may be radically different. We'd expect some radically different numbers in that. We also want to re-talk with everybody again. It's our job to not just put it in the back and say, yeah, we did it once before. Nice to know you. We're going to move forward. We really need to go back to the people that we talked to. We had a whole host of cohorts of all age groups, all spectrums, all types of people. We also had all of what I would call the leadership circles in the community, special interest groups in the community, the dog walkers and dog beach people. We had them all in here, and we want to do it again with everybody. We also want each and every one of you to know that our door is always open for all of you. So while we're talking tonight, as a group, we want you to come and talk to us at the coffee shop, tell us, come on over and sit on the front porch. I got some ideas. It's okay. I know there's an Open Meetings Act, and we will do everything we can not to violate Open Meetings Act. But I think there's a point where everybody here has some thoughts that they might now want to share around the table, and they might want to talk separately. And that's fine. That's good. We're going to talk to everybody and try and build consensus into what is community as part of this planning process. So there was another piece of the pie in terms of the engagement that was very important to us. Two pieces. One, we called our Jeffersonian dinner. And I don't know if anybody here participated in a Jeffersonian dinner, but you're more than welcome to participate in the next great Jeffersonian dinner. And what the Jeffersonian dinner was, was it a single topic of conversation, a single point of conversation that we put out as a question? And we brought a diverse, mixed cohort of residents of Winnetka into a dinner table conversation. And we had two. We had one at Menos, we had one at Oble. This was, you know, back a year and a half. And they were extremely insightful, because they opened up lively conversation. And they were positioned to make a diverse table of people, those who lived here their whole life, those who were post-sixty-five years old, and those who were twenty-eight years and a whole old and just moved here. And it was very lively. It was very informative. It was very productive. And the topic was, what does community mean to you? And we got a lot out of it, a lot out of it. And it helps to have those kind of conversations. So we're going to do that again. However, instead of maybe having a, I don't know, we've got to figure this out. We're still working through some of our engagement techniques to iron out the best ways to do that. But one of the thoughts was, we may want to have some kind of barbecue or something that opens it up to a little bit bigger event, and we would host it at one of the, our goal is, our goal supports economic development. So we'll use one of the local businesses to do that. But I'm excited to roll that out in the next couple of weeks. Over the next four or five weeks, we will be back on the engagement trail. We'll be talking to people. We'll be setting up meetings with focus group sessions, different groups. If there are people you know that you would like us to talk to, write it down. And if you can get it to Ann or Brian or David, I'd rather have those be the clearinghouse, and then they'll come back to us. The names or email contacts would be super, so that we can reach out to people and put them into groups. We're also going to set up a tent, a booth. Suraj and I are working on for the farmer's market on the twenty-fifth of September. So we'll be over here, twenty-fifth of September, for all of you members, is Fall Fest. The fireworks are going off that day, so a lot of stuff, I think, going on on that weekend. Is that right, Chris? It's down to, oh, I'm looking at Rob. Twenty-fifth. So we'll be in the parking lot over here. And we'll have a little handouts, little surveys for people. We're going to upgrade our website for the process, get some survey information out there. We are going to push the brand, for those of you who don't know what that means, get the flag moving around town, get it on posters, get it in storefronts. Just let people know it's out there, that they can find their way back to the homepage and give us their information. So we want that dialogue. That, we hope to wrap up and update this for consideration by the Plan Commission in late November, early December. Have you look at it in draft and then pass it along for a, I would call it an informal dialogue with village council, let them know where we're at. I don't need, I don't think we need to have it voted on or finalized. It can stay in a draft form. It's just part of our process to make sure, reiterate with everybody that we're hitting the right notes and that we're on the right path before we start into planning. Now, we're not going to stay still on the planning aspect of it. It isn't a linear path like it was before. It's going to be, and running in tandem. So there'll be topics of developing the plan that we can continue to work on. And that's what we're here to do tonight, because all of these pillars are what helped build the entire comprehensive plan. The topics that are on here, and I'm just going to run through them quickly, but we want you all to talk to these issues, how you see them, what items, ideas. What have you seen around the country over the last year and a half? You know, we should be doing that. What's wrong with this? Or you know what? We like things like, this is where we are. This is who we are. This is what we want to be. We got to get it up here, make sure we get everybody's voice. So our pillars, the first go-around, were vital commercial areas, and they're broad. Recognize they're broad. Inside that, there's going to be a whole host of things. Variety of housing. In the broadest of categories, that's describing our housing inventory, our stock, and the type of offerings that we provide the residents of our community. Health and engaging lifestyles. How do we do, how do we effectively do that as a community? We could say, you know, the Park District does it. It's their problem. But I think it's a much broader conversation for you as a village to address from a bigger standpoint. Sustainability and climate action. Constantly evolving, constantly changing. We need to get our arms around it. I know that the folks over in the Environmental Forestry Commission have put a lot of thought into this over the last year, developed a really beautiful brief. They're already get-feeding us with the information we need to plug into what I would call our environmental and sustainable aspect of the comprehensive plan. We're not going to write the codes of the forestry commission in the plan. We're going to establish the policy by which they can act, make decisions, and bring it before the board. Does everybody understand that? We're not going to write, hey, you got to cut your grass and not use chemicals in this. We're going to say, the broader ideas are applied, best management practices, apply sustainable principles, and we are a chemical-free community. That's what a comprehensive plan would say. And I would say, in order to get to it, here are the steps we need to do. Here are the actions by the bodies, and here are the codes that need to change. That's what a comprehensive plan does. So variety of housing, healthy, engaging lifestyles, sustainable climate action, culture and community character. That's a big pot, and that's a really, really, really important pot that we need to get people's opinion on. That is, what's the character of this community that we want to keep and protect? That's where the issue of historic preservation and character issues have knocked down. That's where you're going to find those topics being addressed. So I'm kind of laying it out there, so you can see where these things are going to go into that. Educational excellence. That's a conversation speaking about all of our educational institutions, private and public. How do we engage? How are we supporting them? How are they supporting us? And where is that dialogue going? And how do we do it in an effective way? You most notably have seen that dialogue occur with the Duke Charles Field Stormwater Management elements, okay? That'll be a planning tool and topic and policy that we want to put in there. Maybe regular organizational meetings with the superintendent of the Nutria High School to talk about X. So that might be one of the policy prerogatives that we put in there. Parks and open space. Again, back to, there's a Park District. Well, let's talk about parks and open space and what they mean to the community beyond the programmers and operators of that. The Park District is the programming and operating entity of those open spaces. What does open space mean to the community and how important it is? I think we all saw it over the last year, that probably the most important thing in our lives became our outdoors and getting out. Became sidewalks and bike trails and little tiny things that we probably took for granted became probably the most important things in our world. So that's where we're going to speak about those topics. That next one goes without saying. I think you guys are already down the trail on that. I think we got a lot of catching up to do on that to find out where you're at. We have strand engineering on our team. So they're going to be our kind of filling in the gaps, filling in the pages, and letting us know, you know, where you all have already been over the last couple of years to get our stormwater infrastructure up to speed. And that was a conversation we had started with Steve Saunders and Brian. Why am I forgetting Brian's? No, Brian Electric Keys. Thank you very much. We had started talking to them about our infrastructure and how do we address it long-term? Where are the needed improvements? Where are the long-term improvements? Where are the long-term synergies we should be talking about? A lot of dialogue about synergies between our neighboring towns, too, that we might want to build into some of these conversations and think about. What I would call, one of our next things, I jumped over technology, but operational efficiencies. Operational efficiencies as a government unit, operational efficiencies as a community and as a village, operating our facilities, but also operating on the broader spectrum of working with other organizations. Technology, critical. It's probably one of the biggest pieces of our life right now that just jumped in our lap and we didn't know how to deal with it, but now everybody does. And how we use it's super important. It might drive how our community operates, does business, and provides for those who want to open up businesses or run their businesses out of new buildings in the downtown or their homes. Maybe we need to think about upgrading our virtual wireless technology across all spectrums of the community. Those are things we need to think about. That's what's happening in other communities right now. People are going out and communities are setting up wireless systems so you can plug in anywhere you want outside as part of that community's network. So those are the kind of things we may be thinking about and researching. And just a moment back on researching, I think those of you who were involved in that first round, we made a conscious effort in our plan to benchmark ourself against, I think it was eight, eight or nine other communities. And we benchmark ourselves against other like communities, demographically, socially, economically, across the country. In fact, there's only one in Chicago. I think it was Hinsdale that we used. But the rest were across the country in various locations from Kansas City, the Philadelphia, the Boston area, Connecticut area. I think you all know the names of the towns. And we can refresh ourselves on those. But we're going to go back to those communities as part of this process and find out where they were and where they're at now, what topics they're addressing, so that we're, I want to say, we're in step. We're either keeping up or we're ahead. I think that's kind of the goal, is we want to know what's going on out there. We don't want to just live in our box. I can tell you that, you know, working in a lot of the adjacent communities, everybody wants to know what everybody else is doing and is paying attention to all that to stay one step ahead. So I think that's important. Community involvement. Important. I think that speaks to a lot of different things. It speaks to volunteerism. We heard a tremendous, a tremendous amount of conversation with people that the old Winnetka was much more focused on volunteerism. People spent and gave of their time much more than they do today. It's a different audience. And how do we address that moving forward? This is a community of people who volunteer, put the time and help run the music fest. People are committed to it. Is that something that is going away and we need to think about, or we need to sponsor and promote and actually try and infill?
And come to study sessions.
Come to stu-- yeah. So I, you know, it's, it's an important topic, and it speaks to the community aspect of who we are. And the last pillar is regional coordination. And I alluded to that before in terms of lots of agencies that we have to work with. You all know that by virtue of working with our good friends at the Forest Reserve and MWRD and Army Corps of Engineer and everybody else. So that, we want to get on the right page of all those folks and make sure we have a regular dialogue and good coordination opportunities, so that we can benefit from synergies, benefit from the economic benefits that come from those, whether they're grants or other opportunities that come out of that. So those are our pillars. And what we're hoping tonight is just to take a little time with everybody. We want to hear from each one of you. Any thoughts you have on anyone. There's no right or wrong answer. We're going to document it. We're going to write it down. We're going to write it down, and then we're going to type it all up, and we're going to send it back to everybody to have everybody else fill the blanks in, add more, or tell us that we didn't get it right. And that's going to be kind of our marching orders as we start to go out and meet with the public and engage, engage, engage. So any questions on the process or what we're doing? I put a timeline out there for developing the final plan, and there's a lot of back and forth iteration with you as a board and with our Plan Commission in developing that. There's going to be, you can only, I'll tell you, having done this a lot, you can only take so much information at a time and digest it and work on it. So we may only be working on a pillar at a time as we go through this to make sure we get it right. You can't just dump the whole thing on people and expect it to happen. So if anybody has questions, please ask us. This is the engagement team. We have a whole host of other folks that are on our team, from engineering to public finance, market, and zoning and transportation. Thank you very much. Transportation, Sam Schwartz. Our folks are going to be looking at our, not only our roadway systems, our Green Bay Road Quarter, which is a major component of this plan exercise, but also understanding the bigger topic of, and I think, Rob, you brought this up a while ago, how do we deal with the long-term effects of Green Bay Road? Is it, do we want to take control of that road, or do we want to? It's a very fine line of operations there. They also want to address bike trails, bike systems, our Green Bay Trail, making sure, how do we, how do we look at that asset and make sure that we're putting it in the right foot, right foot forward? So any, any que--
There's a lot of information.
It's a lot of information, but I want you to know that we're here, we're really here to listen, and we want to hear from you. And if there's something we're missing or something that we should be looking at, or something that's really on your mind, let us, let us know. Let us know now.
So Scott, one of the big issues that constantly comes before us has to do with zoning, and special use permits, and what kinds of businesses we want, what kinds of businesses we don't want. And I think the experience of the last eighteen months maybe changes the way we should be viewing some of those discussions. And so, you know, we've always had this sort of preference for retail, restaurants, you know, things that are a little bit more interactive. With people working from home, what we sorely lack in this town are working spaces. It probably touches on a bunch of different pillars, but I would like to see it as its own pillar. One of my clients, it's a large IT provider. They're actually running, just a quick poll right now on LinkedIn. And they ask, where are you more efficient working? At home, at work, or both? Now, you can probably discount the accuracy of people's own assessment of how efficient they are, and view it as an expression of where they prefer to work. Forty-nine percent believe they're more efficient working from home. Thirty-six percent believe they're equally efficient at both. Nine percent, of which I currently have one out, think they're better off at the office. That's something that doesn't change with COVID. It's something I'm seeing with my clients. It's something my firm is dealing with. And, you know, the whole issue of co-working spaces and just, it's a whole area of zoning we've never explored, we've never looked into, we've never done any research. But I know it's a reality for a huge chunk of the people in this town, and it will be for time to keep them. Why don't we just want a lot? Big companies are-- Big companies are contracting their offices, they're giving up flexible arrangements, so I'd like to see it as its own thing, 'cause I don't think we get there by talking about our shitty service from AT&amp;T or, which will definitely come up under technology. Or vital commercial areas, which is gonna trigger a lot of discussions about nail salons. So, a work, a discussion about working spaces.
I know.
Go ahead.
We call it regulatory controls because it's part of our bigger development control. It's about, it's zoning, it's gonna be design review, it's gonna be a whole host of-
It might be, the only concern I have with that is people will glaze over and then blackout and then they'll, you know, you have liability issues 'cause they'll fall and hit their head. It's real boring when you, you could have zoning, but I think we need something that actually prompts the discussion about women work, working from, working from Winaka.
Working from Winaka, which may not be working.
I think you need like, that's gotta be a call out because you will be surprised at the feedback you're gonna get. You're gonna find people like me that are gonna be like, I can't do it. You can't work from home, you know? Poor kids and the nature of what I do, if anyone overhears it, it would probably be traumatic for them. So, you know, but you gotta have a prompt, 'cause that is maybe the biggest thing that's happened in the last eighteen months.
Okay. So let us work on coming up with what that, what the right word is for that, okay?
I would, I would just say, we have to be very sober, I can't even talk in this.
Yeah, it's hard. I'm sweating.
About the first phase, which is how we look at this information. We are looking at information, I know you wanna go back and talk to people, we have to be very precise because if we feed in the wrong information, we're, we're asking for information at a moment in time when people are, are walking around in masks. I work at TPG, which is a big private equity firm, we have over a hundred companies. And right now, we're making decisions for companies like Viking Cruise Lines and Lifetime Fitness. And you can already see when people said, oh, it's gonna be years, Lifetime Fitness has almost bounced back, you know, all the way. It's probably about twenty-five percent off, it was seventy percent off before. Viking Cruise Lines is booked, the demand is crazy. So I think we have to be very sober about what information we're taking at a point in time. It'd be like, it'd be like making decisions for the airline industry after nine eleven within the first year. And you saw what happened within three, two, three years. So we just have to be very careful about how we look at this and make sure it's not emotional and, and really looking to the future and really looking at trends with people that are outside our community of how things are gonna bounce back. Otherwise, we may be putting them in pillars that are skewed incorrectly at this moment in time.
Yeah, okay. Good point.
You know, one of the, one of the things I was thinking of, and you probably are already thinking of this, is that for the people you've already talked to, I think you can go start by going back to those folks, right? And getting their feedback as to whether, you know, what has changed in their priorities or what are their concerns? Because it seems like, you know, just, I think we've all experienced, you know, you run into friends who are now thrilled about the restaurants, right? Now concerned about parking, whereas parking was not a concern eighteen months ago or whatever, right? I think it's a good place to start. I don't know how you do this about, you know, kind of re, you know, starting all over, but I do think going to the people who, you know, came forward, you know, that you had comments from to get kinda where they're at and what they've changed in their priorities. Because, you know, although I know co-working space is a hot topic, you know, you still have issues of confidentiality that companies, you know, how do you, you know, it's more likely that you're gonna get a grant from your employer to upgrade your home office on a secure VPN network than it may be to get a co-working space, right? Those are some of the tough conversations. So I, you know, it'll be interesting to see in that group of people what their, what their individual employers are talking to them about, as I know, you know, probably all of our employers are talking, doing something different and, you know, I think it'll be very interesting to start from that group.
Yeah, I totally agree with Rob and Tina. If we don't know where we're going because of COVID in the future, what a great place to start from those same people that already gave us input.
Yeah.
Say, hey, you know, based on your input, what has changed? And you may find very little has changed. And not to go on life thinking about COVID. I mean, like, hopefully three years from now it's gonna be gone, what COVID or what happened, I don't remember, you know?
It takes two to three years to snap back.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
And I, I would agree as well because as we were sitting down, including those, having participated in this the first time as well, I was trying to think of the concerns that I had the first time, you know, that's been sort of been put on the table. And a lot of them are still somewhat similar, you know, as we talk about, we have that technology, we can talk about at the time, upgrading technology and ways of doing that. Because we did talk about COVID concerns and, and as well, you know, how do we upgrade technology and have it blended with the community? We talked about the ugly boxes that sit out in people's yards, which now that you're at home and looking at from the home office that everybody's big ugly box, you're like, ooh, that would be nice enough to have. Or talking about the helping engaging lifestyles and we're seeing so much, we've talked about bike racks and we've got more bike racks in now, but more people are riding their bikes. And if you drive past, I've got kids in, in a couple of the schools, when you drive past the schools at this point, there are so many bikes, they're just sitting there all along. I mean, it's crazy. And even talking about sort of the health and accessibility of things, we recently have some kids that are on a bike, they've got these intersections that are just sort of a bit of a danger zone. And we did this beautiful East Elm space in that, you know, which does slow traffic down a bit, but it is still for some reason insanely weird intersection where people don't think they have a stop sign, I'm not quite sure what happens there. But I think that a lot of those things have remained the same, although some of those things have just kind of intensified, like more bikes, more, more walking, more, you know? And I, some of that I think, but I also do see where that might not be something that changes or settles, right? Like I would prefer my kids to keep on their bikes, you know, for a while. And the schools with outdoor spaces where they've got the kids, they, you know, I know that I've gotten feedback from parents of kids and all of this, that being outside for lunch, it's, they love having the reading rates outside, it's better for how they're learning, it's better for how they're sort of engaging with material in a way because they're not sitting in a classroom. And a lot of the classrooms are not air conditioned and things like that. So those are things still, I think, that we talk about, but I would, we're going back to those people who we spoke to and wanted to see where they're at, which is really, really very much special.
Yeah, I think of bikes, and we've got more bike shops, but also think of all the power skateboards and the electric bikes that zip down in front of my street every day of the week. And I'm like, are those cars, are those motorcycles, are those bikes? It's like, what's our policy? 'Cause they go faster than cars. And I swear to God, I just missed a kid on a power skateboard going to school the other day. I'm like, I couldn't even see him. He wasn't on the sidewalk, he was in the street.
Right.
And so, you know, those are the kind, like, it, they love, it's, you can really move.
And maybe another question to ask, obviously the bikes in the schools and all the quantities is something we have to, you know, make sure there's room for. But living here eighteen years, most summers, Winaka was empty.
Mm-hmm.
All right?
Right.
'Cause of COVID, no one left.
Yeah.
Again, maybe a question out there somewhere, do you plan on sticking around in the future summers or go back to leaving again like other summers?
Yeah.
Good point.
Wanna take a bet?
And then going back, you know, to the electric bikes and that, I rented an electric bike, we're gonna try it. You know, I'm on the bike path, twenty miles an hour, right? Passing strollers and babies and walkers. It's just, there has to be some kind of rules to recreate.
There's no rules.
Right? And honestly, yesterday I was on twenty-two going to work by Lincolnshire. There's a guy on a, on a motorized skateboard with the handle like a scooter, thirty-five miles an hour, through the cars, like a motorcycle in California, right? It's like, so there's gotta be some control or thought about that going forward.
'Cause you guys are both talking about outdoor spaces. We've got this thing that's parks and open spaces. I don't know if that's a prompt for these issues. I don't know if we want something that prompts more of a discussion about how we're using outdoor spaces. Because that, again, that feeds into a bunch of zoning issues we get asked to consider. When people come to us and say, I need a new patio and I'm exceeding my gross allowances or footage.
Yeah.
Is that a necessary thing in this market? I've got no input or data right now. So, you know, it's, it's an issue for a lot of things and what might be interesting, since you're doing research and stuff, in the Midwest, we've traditionally kind of adopted this, it's hot as hell and humid in the summer, turn on the air conditioner, close the door. In the winter, it's cold and you freeze to death, close the, you know? And maybe if, you know, if, if there is somewhat of a change, it would be good to understand how, you know, that, get some info from Norway, Sweden, countries that have been more, you know, for other kids outside to sleep in the snow, you know? But again, it, it's practical in that we need input on zoning issues, 'cause that is, it sucks to have to spitball these issues or say, I think it's gonna change or I don't think it's gonna change, I think it's gonna, we have no idea.
Yeah.
You know, so I think if we have prompts that get to this, and I do think, you know, the, the boosted boards and, you know, all of that stuff, the segways and stuff, it would be good to get some input.
So, so is zoning, it is, 'cause what you're saying and what I imagine will happen in all this, and we have our zoning, we have Duncan Associates, our zoning guy on the team, you know, national expert, they, they write zoning codes across the country. And Kirk Bishop will be here, but is it something that kinda moves through all these as an overlay, so to speak, or is it its own separate? 'Cause I think there's gonna be a zoning issue in every one of these.
Yeah.
Outdoor living, outdoor living is here to stay and sort of continue.
Yeah, but do you wanna fight the battle of whether your patio is two foot square feet over or whatever, your fire pit or whatever? There's some bazillion little things that are popping up every day that staff has to deal with and it's wasting lots of time. Then it goes to engineers, like seventeen people touch one patio permit. I mean, there's a point where it's, come on. Now, I look at that down in operational efficiencies and say, we need to clean up our zoning code, it's a mess. And our subdivision, it's a mess, let's get, let's get it up to date. So is it its own thing or is it just gonna run through?
It might be, as long as you find a way to label it so people don't just, it would be the last thing in the world anyone talks about, at least just have zoning.
Yeah.
So if it's something that, you know-
Asking people, what, what are your outdoor plans? Are you going to run more, more, more time outside at home or would you like to spend more time at businesses outside?
That's an easy answer, it's a layup.
They're all opening major parties, they're expanding their patios, they-
Moveable walls, all that.
What are the home improvement projects you're planning in the next twenty-four months?
And more importantly about, about being outside is during the winter, because, because in Illinois and in Chicago, it's super cold, but we learned how to adapt during the winter of COVID and we did stay outside a lot longer than we would have. So we just shifted our mentality of how we, you know, hang out.
Again, let's be careful with this.
Right.
We know, we might not change, but we wanna know-
It was forty degrees outside on my screen porch. I guarantee you, next year's winter, if there's not COVID, I'm not gonna be on my screen.
I guarantee you, next winter, we'll still have COVID.
Yeah. And I think that's part of it, is right, you know, I think that that is in the mindset, people are thinking, oh, we're gonna get past this, but you know, we may have something similar, right? Or we may just be, it may be, you know, a different way of living where we're living more outdoors and how people are changing living, whether it's, you know, an accelerated change, to your point Becky, or whether it's just, you know, a blip in time, I think people are embracing outdoor spaces. You know, I was just reflecting on this, when I first moved to the North Shore twenty years ago, very few kids would ride their bikes to school, very few kids were walking to school. And largely, I think it's because, you know, right now you have two people oftentimes both working from home or in the home. And so it's manageable, it's a family thing. I can't get over how many kids are riding their bikes, right?
Yeah.
And I think that is something that a lot of families are, that's gonna be here to stay. And, you know, I really think that you can take that and even if it shrinks by twenty percent, we're gonna really have to think about how our crossing areas and work with the schools to make sure they're safe. Make sure the Green Bay crossing here on Elm is safe, 'cause I think that that is, you know, we're just lucky that nobody has gotten really, really seriously hurt, so.
You don't have a safe way to go east or west on a bike.
No, no.
And when that came up a number of years ago, about four more. And talking across the Green Bay.
Yeah.
There was a bike, there was a bike plan. The park district did a bike plan, I think you guys even studied a bike plan or something. And there was the major east-west on Elm, but, and there was another one somewhere else, but I don't know if it ever got anywhere, I don't know if it ever got adopted.
It did not get anywhere. The mayor of Fayette Council killed it at that point and it just died a untimely death.
Well, sometimes things is timing, you know? And now maybe you have to think about-
I think the timing was fine, eight years ago, but, you know?
I agree, I agree. Anyway.
Some things just didn't happen to work out very well.
So whether you're still have all these kids riding their bikes, you're gonna have some portion of it, right? You're gonna have some portion of people being around fire pits because they've invested in them, you know? Yeah. But in, to your point Tina, like it's, it, we're trying to forecast future usage, but we also, as a village, I think there are, you know, we were trying to actually steer the ship a little bit toward active transportation and away from cars for a lot of reasons, safety, congestion, sustainability. So, you know, this could be an opportunity on that front and maybe others to sort of nudge change along.
And I'll tell you, I, I, I think our prior plan was really good and helpful for a while and served the need, especially well when it was originally drafted. As, as someone who was asked to consider policy issues towards the end of that plan, I felt like it was too focused on preserving and not enough on adapting to the change that was happening. And, and that's something, and maybe that's where, we can talk about zoning, but just, we're, we're still gonna have an important discussion on preservation, preserving our houses, we talk about all the time. I mean, every zoning decision, we're branding a lease, go home to houses, 'cause we don't wanna see it get torn down. So I think we've got that on lock, but, but the, the idea of, of the change, I agree with your idea, like, we, we should be a little bit active in steering the ship. Whether COVID is here or not, biking is good. Being outside is good for the kids. I mean, key numbers were way down last year. I haven't been sick in like two years, it's awesome.
I mean, it's, it's good for health and wellness, let alone, you know, blue zones in, in areas that, just all you're trying to do is encourage people to walk a few blocks instead of driving. It makes a difference health-wise too.
Following up on Andy's point too, you know, part of this, and we talked about it, Scott, back in the, we were in our council a month or so ago, that you wanna make this document, living and breathing, I, there's a lot of talk now, which is about what's going on right now, but hopefully this is not a document that's mothballed and talked about it ten years or whatever. And so I like this idea of a framework that we can, that when we're all gone, not around these tables anymore, that the next people can look at that framework and operate within that. And I know that, you know, the fact that you're looking at different communities, I mean, Winaka, we are who we are, we're, you know, we're different than we're not, we're different than Evanston. We may be more like Dyna, I don't know who we're like, but we are our own community, we're all here, we all came here for different reasons. You know, and you're gonna get that diversity of feedback and so on. And hopefully that sort of funnels into something that someone ten years from now can say, they talked about sustainability or they talked about having more outdoor activity and this is consistent with that. And so I, I kind of, I hope it's, it's more than a, it will be more than a two or three year document, I know that.
Yeah.
We'd have to get this in there, but the idea of a framework and guidelines and policies to work around down the road, I think that's the value out of this.
It's, it's meant to be challenged by future boards and it's meant to be updated. Look, just look what's happened over the last twenty years. Nobody would, where we are and technology just alone has changed our entire world. So I think we just have to set it up so it has flexibility built into it, but it also has clarity, so that it isn't, you know, so warm and fuzzy that you can't really, and everybody's challenging you twenty-four seven about everything that's in there. So there's gotta be a little bit of a, a sense that leaves room for debate, leaves room for future growth, but also is clear. I think, you know, I think one of these topics, you know, culture and community character, to me, that's a really, really, really important pillar.
Yeah. Because- Scott, you had a, you had a, if you dove into any one of these and said, this is gonna be a topic like the jumping zoning dinners, whatever, you can almost have mission statements for each of these pillars.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, you know, the, the, a many mission statement can provide that, that flexibility down the road. And so-
And the emphasis on what's important, more- And the emphasis on what's important more, more than anything.
That's right.
I think that's exactly right.
Just hitting you in the head with it in the first line, really critical piece to this. So that people understand that it wasn't the thirty-eighth paragraph in the second sentence, you know. Because we've seen that, where people just dig to some arcane section of the, of the code or the, the plan and then bring it here and use it as a justification for what they're asking for. So, you know, if we have those overarching messages that say, here's the direction, here's what we're looking for. And then it gives all of our regulatory boards the chance to debate them and, you know, extract what they believe to be the correct answer for any given issue with that.
I think that speaks to readability, too, right? Having a plan that is legible, accessible, not just to the people meant to enforce it, but to the public, right? So, they get a sense of, sense of it with having to go to paragraph thirty-five B, you know.
And not having, and not having fifteen criteria.
Yep.
Right? That all say slightly the different thing is like reading, you know, like the Bible, all different authors, right?
Yeah.
You know, slightly different version of the same kind of description. It's very hard for the plan commission.
Well, zoning might give you a clue to that because what's going on today in zoning, in zoning for today, five years from now, it, it, you need to state that the zoning code is a living, breathing organism or whatever it is, that, you know, will adapt, but will conform with what the rest of this Bible is telling us.
Well, you, you have to develop an effective comprehensive plan to develop an effective zoning strategy. Because one challenges the other in a court of law theoretically, right? I mean, as long as you prove up your LACAL standards, you're fine. So, if you put a, you have a statement that says one thing and you color it one way and you have the wrong kind of zoning, look out. And so, we don't wanna put anybody here in that position. We wanna make it very clear, very simple, I love the idea of just a simple mission statement because it gives you the basis. And then you can have all the little underlying things you want. And Becky's right, ninety percent of the account plans that we write today is less about verbiage and more about clarity, simple, simple sentences, imagery. Things that make it clear for people what you're trying to achieve as opposed to, you know, writing the Emancipation Proclamation. It just doesn't work anymore, and so.
It's short, though.
It's short, actually.
Scott, do you guys envision providing actionable items, too?
Absolutely.
That are concrete.
And timelines and responsible parties and priorities, right?
In a matrix.
Yeah, in a matrix format. We'll put that as part of each of these pillars of the action items, timelines. Sometimes we put what we call the dollar signs, the menu dollar signs. So, there's an order of magnitude of, are we getting ourselves into a big ticket item or is this a small one? We should take on this one, this is easy for us. That's what everybody wants now. They want a roadmap to move forward with over a one, three, five, ten-year horizon. And past ten, it's virtually impossible to see, but that just goes back to the big policy topic. Absolutely right.
Makes it easier to manage, I think, and implement.
And update.
An update.
Well, I have a, I have a common question. So, I'm newer to the council and I don't know if the stuff we've seen is different than previous years. We see obviously a lot of zoning requests and variances, some interesting new businesses coming to town, some interesting, how do I say, projects like cool domes, some one-off. But my question to the plan commission, because this is largely in your lap and you presented to us and where you went and how far you've gotten. Do you guys, the plan commission, see stuff that you think the first go-around should be changed for what he's gonna do now or the team's gonna do now?
Do you mean from this?
So, I, how often have you presented to them? I'm wondering if we're hearing the same.
Good question.
We never did.
No.
No, no.
We just had a working session.
We had a working session, it's interesting, you, I just looked this up today, I was curious, it's January twenty-twenty. We came for our first working session with you all. And so, I, so I, I think there's a really fascinating question and it, I think it starts with reassurance that this isn't all due over. Like, we have all the information. We talked to, how many, three hundred?
Three hundred.
People last time? So, we're working from a solid foundation. Your point's a really good one. What's new?
Right, yeah, I was just curious if you guys had opinions or stuff that when you first had a working session.
Well, I think the, the thing that happened right when things paused was you were gonna come back to the plan commission and give us an update on that.
We were, we were, we had, we had submitted this.
I'm glad to see it.
No, no, we never saw it. No, no.
That's because it went to, it went to, it went to those guys over there.
Went to staff?
Went to staff.
But we were missing a step.
Well, so it went to staff to get reviewed and staff is gonna review it and we were gonna finalize it. But we weren't gonna file this until we had our first community open house.
Which was scheduled for.
Which was scheduled, we made beautiful boards and then the world shut down.
You're just teasing us. Is that open, is that open, is it empty inside?
Did you say?
Is it empty?
Yeah.
Oh, I got letters and everything, pictures and letters, look at it.
That's awesome.
No, we literally, yeah.
Just said, all work, you know, playing like Scott in Norfolk.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a hundred and some.
Just a cover with, you know.
There's a hundred and eighty pages of just this and it wasn't complete yet, just the front end.
So, so really, our open houses.
You're paying by the page.
Done, that, yeah, I was just gonna say, so when, so you haven't had further discussions and when you've had, I was part of one of these roundtables.
Yeah, a little, yeah.
Just super fascinating. I'm wondering of these pillars, did you hit them all with each of the groups so far? What, what data is missing? What can you iterate on with their next opinions after COVID's happened? I'm just curious where we stand as we start brainstorming up here.
In terms, in terms of us tonight or?
Yeah, and what information have you gathered from your, your cohorts, your roundtables, your Jeffersonian dinners?
So, I'll, I'll take stab, you just jump in. It's not like we sat down with you or anyone else and said, you've got twelve pillars and you're not leaving here till you fill them out, you know? So, so, um, people.
Cause you might not care about some, some people don't care.
So, um, and the Jeffersonian dinners, frankly, which I thought was fascinating, they all went to the really broad and somewhat fluffy concept of community. Which I thought was fascinating because there are a lot of things that people can wanna talk about, including the downtown and everything else. But community is what they wanted to talk about. So, um, I guess two things, we are building on a foundation, input based upon the people who we spoke to, what they wanted to tell us. Tried to cover a lot of this. All these pillars are addressed in Scott's not vacant, a hundred and twenty-page state of the village.
One eighty-one.
What, huh?
One eighty-one.
Oh, sorry, one eighty-one page state of the, um, but, so there's not a one-to-one, I would say, between, you know, what did plan commissions say to parks and open space in twenty-twenty versus what do they say today?
So, when do we get to see that?
Sorry?
So, once we, once we redo our.
Some of it's wrong now.
Well, it's a starting point.
Well, here's the thing, if staff had it to edit, and staff will give us back their edits and comments and thoughts to make sure that there's the right nomenclature, whatever it is. And then this was gonna be supplemented by community open house dialogues to, to go in it. And then essentially, it would have been at a, it would have been at a point where we would present it to the plan commission for review and dialogue. They're, they were the entity that, you would have seen it like, if I were to take a timeline, two to four weeks after they had a chance to beat it up a little bit. Because they may have said, hey, we don't agree with some of these things you have in here, go out and get more information or, or we need some more, we need more data to support that opinion. It's not really much opinions, it's more of just what we heard and the data that we had. And so, if it, so if the plant commission said, well, we'd love to see where we ended, we don't have a problem taking a, a mended draft, make sure we've edited everything and sharing that with them.
Throw preliminary data and, you know.
Yeah.
John, I think it's important, although we gotta.
No, I agree. Yeah, but, yeah, that's why I'm saying, John, like, I'm still, my plant commission is my steering committee and I have to go through the plant commission, let them digest it and then they're gonna bring, bring it back.
But it'd be a great spot to see where we think we were a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Before you move forward revising it to see what the differences might have been, just a thought.
I'm definitely curious to see it. I, although I do think that it almost feels like the thing to do is to talk to, and I know that the original project, that's cut short because we weren't able to do a whole piece of it in the first place. But going back to those original people and seeing where they're at and then having that in their playbook and stuff like that to update the people.
Yeah.
You know, it's really, one of the really interesting things in the data was that when we talked to, when we talked to people, particularly talked to older folks that were retiring or moving away or whatever, there was a sense of anger and animosity. In some of the conversations, we can't sell our house because the village has all these ridiculous zoning ordinances and their preservation and da-da-da, and they were really.
Well, preservation.
I just gotta be honest with, I'm just, you know.
No, I know, now they just want a solid house like that.
And I live here, so I could, we could tell you that, but that was.
And we're old like that, too.
We're old like that.
Yeah.
So, the, um, there was a lot of angst, a lot of angst. They were really kinda pissy and they didn't want, and they were blaming everybody for the reasons why they weren't selling our houses and they're taking a bogey on everything. It used to be.
But it's good information.
Well, now, look at where we are now, there's not a house for sale in the town and everything's getting bought up and so.
Sell them out.
That's because we're doing everything so great.
No, we're not doing anything differently. And they, and they're still ringing the cash register on the, on the building permits like this. So, it's, there's some dynamic that there's, everybody's fleeing the city because there's issues going on down there.
It's important then to get that, so in addition to the people that you've already talked to, you need to talk to the countless folks that have moved up there.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But how to engage them.
Right.
But that's hard to engage them and get them into the processes because a lot of times they're flying, either they have kids who aren't in the schools.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's a challenge, right? Because we, I live in Forest Glen and I wanna say we have probably fifteen new families. Um, not a lot of them are engaged in these conversations yet, you know, they're so new, right? And they're not at, they're not plugged into community institutions yet, whether it's the private schools or the preschools. So, I think that's a challenge.
Well, I think that you have all of the outdoor activities. When we first moved up here and the beach plan was started and all this stuff, all you, everybody likes the outdoor activities in the neighborhood. You just have your boards there and you bring them and you actually send them to the websites. Anyone that seems, you have a lot of ideas, you try and get them on some committee.
Like you or something.
Yeah, or something like that. So, I think that that's not gonna be as much of an issue, you know, as long as we can start setting up shop wherever there's open space, outdoor space. But you said something that I come across a lot, which is, everybody hates the village and everybody that does anything for them, they're all volunteers. And they're wrong even about what they think we're doing.
Yeah.
So, if there would be some way, you know, to teach people.
Not possible.
I love being a hondustan.
Because, no, the, the animosity is for everything, though. Like, people are mad about the ticket prices at the Winnetka Christmas festival and the whole thing has changed. I'm like, that's not really a village thing.
Right.
Right? Like, it started off as sort of a village thing, but it's not really anymore and they don't get any money. They're like, the village is raking it in. I'm like, they're paying, they're paying for it, right? People have no idea how things are going.
But that's not typical to Winnetka, that's everywhere.
Yeah, it's true.
Really, it is.
Everywhere.
No matter where you're at.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the same issue.
When I was on my team.
But I mean, is it typical that everybody was angry, like when he's interviewing people?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
So, when I was on the caucus, you know, we do the survey every year and then you get the, the comments, right? And you don't ever read the comments.
No.
I liked reading them. But my, my favorite one was, and who knows, maybe someone in this room probably won't, uh, someone wrote, the trustees are a bunch of giant boobs. So, to this day, my wife, whenever Tuesday rolls around, she says, do you have a giant boobs for you? I think you embrace it, you know?
Well, I mean, to your, I mean, to be serious, there is a helpful element of a community engagement process like this. That is not, it's not, we're not talking about a dog beach or something, a small slice of something. We're talking about community and government and all our hopes and dreams. I think there is some happy effect of that and some understanding of us all together, including our, you know, beleaguered, uh, volun, public volunteers.
Well, and you also brought up volunteerism and that was interesting to me that that came here because I can tell you the exact moment and it, it wasn't just Winnetka. This was all sorts of communities, I was down in Lincoln Park, and the cutoff is my youngest child. Everyone above my now eighth grader, parents were super involved, and everyone below, you couldn't get people to do anything. And some of it was that more people were working, people were working different jobs with different hours. People were more stressed because with the internet, it's become more and more time, your emails take up so much time. And volunteerism just across the board is totally down.
Right.
But I think people want to do it. So, when you can have small opportunities that they don't have to commit to way ahead of time or they can commit to and there's a reminder right before. I do think that people wanna be engaged and feel like they're helping their, their town and the things that aren't.
And.
John, you've been trying, I'm sorry, Johnny, I'm mute, cut you off. You've been raising your hand for a minute.
Before engaging you, I guess a question I would ask is, what do you all do that you need to get to the style of the Jordan and whatnot? I mean, I, I know you have it, but, you know, it's always a local minority.
That's true.
People hate the village that, that come to all these things and the dinners are great. But you have a way of getting into the houses and the mind of the ten thousand residents who are or wouldn't participate in this?
Well, that's, that's, that's survey work, right? Right, that's a really, that's a really, really good point.
Is that what we really?
Well, so one thing we did, we worked really hard at on the first go-around. Um, instead of saying, you know, all comers, please come and talk to us and you'll get the same fourteen people. And they're all a certain age and demographic, right? And so, we created this set of personas and we put little images on them. Um, so it's, you know, empty nesters, it's people who've moved in here recently and have little kids. It's, it's young people that their mother would like them to move back here, for example. Um, it's, it's this different age group and so we had to fill those buckets. So, we had to go out and find those people and pull them in. Like, we had one that was multi-generational households. So, I wanted to hear what somebody sixty-five, sitting at a table with their, you know, forty-year-old, thought about living in Winnetka and hear those ideas flash around. So, it's not easy because people are busy. But, um, I think creating those thinner slices of personas did, did help.
And you asked us on the plan commission to help provide.
Yes, yes, and you. Thank you.
Because I remember putting together lists of people trying to fill some of those buckets and, or maybe you just reached out to me. I can't remember if we all did that, but I remember we had names, addresses.
Yeah, we went to caucus and asked, we went to, you know, um, you know, the preschool and tried to get leads, you know. I tormented everybody new on my block, you know, like, we, we worked it, but, um, welcome your input. Welcome names you have. I talked to the new Crow Island principal, I'm like, we need to talk to young people. And he's new, so he was happy to, so, you know, we're gonna try and pull those levers, but all the help you can give us is welcome.
Going back a little bit to the village being nasty people to work with and all that for housing, whatever, you know, keep in mind, we gotta, I mean, I feel we got a great staff.
Oh, yeah.
And I would, again.
I think they're talking about us.
No, well, no, but.
I don't get, I don't get that.
It's the formulation of one Winnetka being the village.
Right, right. So, as I work across the United States, I'm dealing with all different communities and trying to get information from some communities is a real pain.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody could probably walk in this office tomorrow and, and talk to Brian or Anne or anybody and, and start to get a process, how do I do this? And we got a list and dates and, it seems like a pretty good deal. So, maybe part of those people you talked to are complaining, also maybe you talk to staff, I'm sure you will, about, you know, what are these conflicts? And they might know the people about what happened and usually it's not the system here. It could be someone asking for a garage and the house is too big, I mean.
It's, sorry to say, but sometimes it's the people themselves.
And they tell them.
The complainers.
And you can't tell them, you can only listen.
Right.
Something else that I, and I, you guys do this all the time, so I'm sure you know this, but, so sometimes when the surveys come out, people are busy and they wanna feel they've done their part about the surveying. But like, I think we've gotten into trouble with like the dog park or pool or whatever. You get your survey, what would you like to see him with? And I'm like, God, I love it here, you know? It's like, I'd love a pool, yes, oh, dog park would be great, yes. And then people move with that and like, we almost had a dog park like in Elm, Elm Park, West Elm Park. And they're like, well, everybody on the survey wanted a dog park. I'm like, I didn't, like, I was just like, oh, that sounds nice. Like, I responded, yes, I don't really care, my dogs are small, but I'm like, that seems nice. Nobody's gonna think about where we go. So, when people say, yes, I'd love a pool, like, I would love a pool, there's nowhere for a pool to go, there isn't.
Just not in my backyard.
You go and you give up, you have a pool. So, it's like, sort of a faulty question.
There's a better way to ask the question without asking about the specific. It's more, you're asking about how they spend their leisure pursuits or their recreation time and how they best get those services provided to them. And instead of asking about a pool directly, you'd say, how, do you enjoy water? How do you, is water sports an important part? How do you derive that? And you'd find in Winnetka, what shot the pool down is, we all belong to country clubs, we don't need a. How do you derive that? And you'd find in Winnetka, what shot the pool down is, we all belong to country clubs, we don't need a pool. So I mean, there's, 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 there is a rationale for how you set up a, effective survey. You gotta be really careful when we're doing a survey because everybody's gonna bond you with a zillion things. And that's not what we really want. We gotta, that's why we're using the word community. What does community mean to you? And it just got everything down to a very simplified level. And sometimes it said, I love just being able to walk, I love the old homes. And you could take those comments, when somebody asks, how do we put the, we took those comments and we put them into the pillars. And so that one belongs in housing, that one belongs in community culture and character, that one belongs over operational efficiencies. But that's what we were doing when we were talking to people. We were pulling the conversation apart and putting it into these buckets on our own. Because for us to put twelve of these out there and say, okay, everybody answer the, you have an hour with everybody, they don't have time.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think that the way to find, um, or the best chance at finding, um, sort of broad-based support for any political thing, any public initiative, is by finding shared values, right? It's not, I know where the park, the dog park should be and how, what size it is and whether there should be astroturf. It's like the shared value of, I wanna be outdoors, I wanna be active, I want in, want into, run into friends and I'd like to take my dog. Like whatever it is, right? Come up higher on that hierarchy of needs. And don't, don't get pinned down to specific implementation. I mean, honestly, God, that's why we have a representative form of government. So that people can have an understanding of what the goal is and leave it to people who've studied it. You know, you people at these tables to implement it in the most sensible fashion.
And to get the hate. But that's fine, it's okay.
You know, one of the things that strikes me is potentially an area where there's a lot of movement to the cranky, you know, empty nesters who were, you know, valued their house more than it was maybe worth pre, pre-pandemic and now probably have moved out of the village, is the change in the variety of the housing, right? We knew at the time of Win-Winnetka, you know, by the time we got to the end of Win-Winnetka hearing process, more people were coming out of the woodwork saying, we want to downsize, we wanna have a place on the North Shore, but we don't wanna have the three thousand and five thousand square foot housing. One of the questions I have, and maybe the best to get to this is the brokerage community, is now that some of those people have sold, you know, how has that changed people's thinking about variety of housing? You know, would this now restart the discussion of, you know, is the post office site an opportunity for multifamily housing? You know, that's controversial, I know that. And, you know, that was one thing that in a shred a long time ago, you and I had kinda suggested. Does that mean that maybe we're more thinking about, you know, maybe being willing for density in places that we haven't thought about density? Whether it's the Green Bay corridor, whether it's Win-Winnetka, all those different areas. Has the community thinking shifted as we've changed? I mean, eighteen months has been a lot of change. And we may go back to a different, you know, a more normal reality, but that's the one thing in addition to technology that I really think about, you know, how people's shit, thinking shifted dramatically. I don't know.
So wondering whether there has been, there have been more seniors who've sold without a clear place to go. Recognizing that problem might encourage more diverse, um, downsizing or starter houses, for example.
Yeah. And I don't know what the number, right, that, that may change the community thinking. You know, we always got the sense that younger people coming to the public hearing, now this is just a broad generalization, were more comfortable with density because they were coming from the city and they were less concerned about density. And it was oftentimes residents, not age-wise, but residents who had been here longer, who were more concerned about density. Has that started to shift as maybe the population resident community has shifted? You know, I just wonder about some of this because that, that is probably a really controversial topic, but it's, presents great opportunities for us, given the health of the housing market right now.
And I think, kinda closing the loop on the last fifteen minutes, finding out from the people who have moved here recently is going to help us define the characteristics that.
Why did they?
You know, it would sure be nice to know, why did you come here?
Yes.
Yeah.
And maybe it's, it isn't just outward sort of things, but the sort of things, how they're describing their experience is being different from where they were before.
Right.
And, you know, that might give you clues as to, you guys are the pros in this, but, you know, it seems to me that you would be able to glean clues for what they really put a lot of emphasis and desirability to.
Right.
And those might be things that, that fall into the culture and the community thing, of things that we really need to have, much to your thing, um, the headline.
Yeah.
Why are we here? Yeah. And, and my thought on that is, we've seen how many, you know, just if you look at the number of transactions in Cook County and just within certain zip codes, it's hard to get that data, but I think if you go to the brokerage community, they will all have clients that moved in.
Yeah.
Some of the cranky people are gone now, you know? Maybe some of the more, you know, this is great, I can walk, um, I can get a cup of coffee, I can go to the library and I can go to the community house, you know? That, I think it'll be really interesting.
But, you know, and the thing is.
Oh, you're a hothokie, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
And the reasons have not necessarily changed, but they accelerated because of COVID. And people wanted more space.
Reasons for that.
More space.
They wanted space.
They wanted space, but there's another thing, people want security. And the city living has not, has gone, has declined in security here, here for the last ten years, I would say, and, and others that were previously safe. And it's interesting because when you talk about density, they're probably comfortable with density, but probably concerned about security.
Right.
So how do you balance that? Or which is, which trumps the other, uh, at least in this conversation, you know?
We got a, we got a, we, um, we, uh, reached out to the, um, to the Park District and got their list of a hundred new, uh, last year of new, they, they hold and manage a list of all new people who've moved into town, young families that moved into town that are now part of the Park District signing up for programs. So we're gonna get that list to use as a benchmark to go out and find those families over the last, they said six, nine, and twelve months. I just said twelve months is what we want.
I suppose it's still a preschool community, just as a heads up. Preschools, one in particular, there's three main ones in addition to Sacred Heart and St. Luke's. One had been under enrolled for years. Every single one of them has a waitlist, some up to fifty families deep.
Wow.
The place to go, the little preschools, Winnetka Community Nursery School, Sacred Heart, or also Sacred Heart, um, WPSN and Willowood. And also reach out to All Things Bright and Beautiful, Big Willowood and a joint called Noise because they get a lot of attention.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because a lot of families are from Winnetka.
I know it's harder to do, but also talking to people that moved out.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So I know one guy, I know one guy, I'll send an email over to Brian of his name. And, uh, he moved out of Winnetka and moved into Colorado.
Yeah. Is that tax-driven?
Well, I don't wanna be the person to say that, but it's Illinois.
You know, there's like a whole host of.
For every one of those people, I have my neighbors' children who moved from New York City and Greenwich. Because it's less.
A lot of sand transit transports as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
And John, that even makes a more powerful argument and, and, and a more powerful question. Because even though Illinois sucks, okay, these people, these people have still made a decision to live here.
From New York.
In Illinois.
And we're still here.
Hey, we call around, we're running out of water.
Yeah, Bill, I, we, we actually went to the plan.
We gotta listen.
The one thing I remembered that we came up with was, what was the worst thing about Winnetka? It was being in the state of Illinois. It was the number one.
Wow.
Can't do much about that.
No, we could be, I think we decided we wanted to be the best place in Illinois.
Can we succeed and create?
But surprisingly, a lot of the people that are moving out, when you talk to them, they'll say, we'd love to still have a place here because this is our home. Our family's here, we wanna be here for holidays. And then we're gonna go to South Carolina, Florida, Texas, Montana, Wyoming, Arizona, or California. I mean, there's, the states are all going, and if you look at what they're buying on the other end, which is really telling, they're buying density. They're living in these smaller units, in these little communities that have all the services, amenities, golfing, tennis, in smaller houses, less land, nobody takes care of it, no more cutting the grass, no, it's all paid for. They're okay with density there.
Yeah.
But I think.
It's just a different, it's like, there's a change in how we're, all of us are how we're living. And we're becoming a little bit more immune to density, not fully, but a little bit more realizing that it's the sense of the place that you live in where you get your value out of. It's not just the house and your four walls, it's the whole picture. And so if I have, like, my wife and I talk about it, we're like, okay, we got a nice big house on Elm Street, we don't need anymore. All the kids, we have one more leaving next year. It's like, we wanna downsize. Okay, look for your ranch and do your post-modern thing. That's your, that's what everybody's doing right now. Those are all gone. Now, what's the next thing? Well, there is no little townhouses. I'd love to buy, what I'd love to buy is a little old house in the neighborhood that I can renovate and stay here. So I drop the taxes down, but I want walkable, I want close to, I don't wanna leave my zone. I just want less, I just want less. That's all I want. I would, I would. Like that's, okay, but that says something because, you know, maybe there's something about preservation and historic texture. There's all this, there's something in there about that idea that may help save some of these older houses in that thinking. So that's the kind of stuff we gotta get our arms around.
You have to be able to beat the developers of those houses.
That's the problem, right? Somebody's in there before.
Or develop a different.
An important part of your survey too, though, when you're talking to seniors and, uh, seniors, is to figure out what do people really want in senior housing here? I know when Win-Winnetka came along, the original apartment, the average size was gonna be six hundred and fifty, seven hundred square feet. And they were expect, they were expecting people to go up to five.
No, they want like sixteen hundred to two thousand first floor master, full bathroom. They need storage like they used to have because they got all their furniture.
And that would be helpful in the comprehensive plan, you know, if someone comes in with a problem, we can say, this is what the comprehensive plan calls for, we want two thousand square, you know, substantial housing. The one other thing I would say is just that on the, uh, the planning commission, we spend a lot of time on special use permits. And I just think that being able to define what the village wants, the village downtown to like, we're kind of, you know, stuck on this retail quarter mode that we have. And, you know, we feel badly every time we recommend that the service industry goes in there. But the reality is, is that, and, and so maybe what we want is the community with the best service industries to bring people in here, use the restaurants and the shopping that we have. But I just think it's really important to find that because we spend over half our time talking about the commercial area. You know, we never talk about any of this other stuff because we can't get down. So I think it's really important to find that.
It's the overlay, John?
I think we're climbing a headway there, though. I think with the people, our economic development team, we're actually filling some spaces. The cars, the, uh, called, is it, what was the bank that the, uh, real estate place?
Yeah, I know.
Berkshire Hathaway, they would flip-flop with.
Valentina.
Which is, which is, that's a win.
But, but I know where you're going.
I just think we need to define, is that what we still wanna do?
Yeah. Because if you look back at the special use permits that came through because of overlay district,
Yeah.
I would bet ninety percent or more got approved.
Yeah.
I could be wrong, but.
So then what's the policy if it's?
Some, but, but I think, okay, so, but we talk about this all the time. And Bridgette and I were just talking about the stove of coffee. Just us. Just two. That, you know, that is a perfect example where Berkshire Hathaway was, we took so much heat for that, right?
Yeah.
Really, a ton of heat, particularly Bridgette. And yet that is our state in Maine, as we've always said, right? So we held firm and it's great that Valentina is moving there and all those things. But that's state and Maine, right? And then, but, you know, what about on the fringes, right? And that's the tougher conversation, you know, putting a dentist at the end of Elm. You know, yeah, that hap, there's now cars there at least, and now there's a blow-dry place and there, you're starting to see some traffic. But those were hard decisions. Um, but then we denied the physical therapy where Bunny and Babys, right? I think it was physical therapy. And that was the right decision, but that was a hard decision. So I think it really depends on the location, right, and the use and whether it's gonna generate enough foot traffic to help support other businesses. Which is a very hard subject, I mean, it's almost, the special use permit, in my opinion, is a subjective process. And it's hard to get away from it because of those factors. It's hard to say in a code, okay, you know, you can go here because you're middle of the block, you know? I agree with you.
And I go back to.
It's not in, it's, it's so inefficient, but I don't know how you get away from that.
And you're not even factoring in the building ownership issues.
That's exactly right.
That's a whole other layer of this that we gotta talk about because that has a, you know, that's radically changing in terms of the control of the ownership of the downtown. And we, and we have to talk about new development. If there's ever new development, you know, the whole topic of first floor retail. Well, who's paying for fifty dollars a square foot first floor retail and new construction? We, you know, we gotta think about that. We still wanna fill up all of our old stuff.
Those stakeholder meetings were those built in there, landlords.
Well, so here's a good example.
Can we explain that a little more, just to flush it out, the stakeholders and, and?
Yeah. So, so the type of stakeholders that we meet, so we'll have a contingency of different types of focus groups. So we had, for instance, we did the first time, we had real estate folks that were in, um, brokerage, okay, or ownership. We tried to get the Hoffman people, they didn't wanna talk to us, so we'll, we'll try again. But we talked to a lot of the brokers and they talked about all the trials and tribulations of getting businesses in and the special use permit and the overlay and all that kinda stuff we heard over and over again. And then we also talked to local developers and architects and we put them in. And that was a good conversation because it talked about, well, I don't wanna do business, it's too scary, it'll take forever, or I built something there and it wasn't that big of a problem. Or an architect would say, I like working there, or it's a pain. But we, we were getting downloads on process pains and positives, right? Through the whole thing. And so that talked to us about the commercial business district. But then we would also talk to other people in other focus groups, like, let's say it was, um, let's say it was moms with small kids. You know, I wish there was a place to hang out while I dropped Junior off at Willowood and I could get a cup of coffee on the east side. Why don't they do something? So now you're getting different perspectives. And then you have to answer the question, well, I heard the rents are just too expensive over there and they're beat-up old buildings. And that's another layer of conversation into the mix, you know? And there's all kinds of questions that come out of that, that we need to answer and address. And they may be code issues, they may be property management issues. There's a whole host of things that we need to, to think about in this conversation that come out of those, those focus group sessions. And then some, you know, you might be talking to somebody else in another group and all, and the, the, the real estate people, they're all over like apartments, 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 because they can sell them and rent them fast. They know they have a huge market. That, and they, but it's not just here, it's up and down the whole North Shore. I mean, they're, they're going crazy right now because all these empty nesters are selling their house and there's nowhere else to buy a house. So in the interim, where do I go? I need an apartment, I need an apartment, I need apartment, I'll rent for X amount. So all the stuff over by Plaza de la Gago right now is on fire. Like everything is, everybody's bought up everything over there. Those are, if you've been in them, they're old, they're old.
The other thing that people are doing with renting and buying in this office space.
Yeah. And, 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 uh, uh, and maybe it's my imagination, isn't Hoffman, didn't they buy the, uh, BMO building? Or weren't they gonna turn the second, third floor into office suites up there?
Yep.
Brilliant idea. And they were doing that before COVID hit, you know, and that, that's smart. And I would, I'd suspect will be other things. And second floor uses, how do we address those in this conversation? I know that came up before in some of our.
Fully advertised, yeah.
Yeah. So there's, there's just a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff. And, and what we wanna hear from you is, when you're sitting on a regulating body or a reviewing body, what are the problems you have having, making decisions on these things? And that's what we're supposed to be doing, is helping you answer the question or make it a very clear pathway to do it. I remember, John just left the room, but I, I sat on, I sat for a while on the, on the designer review board and the planning commission. But then on the designer review board, it was like Gary, Frank and I looking at the color of onions every week. Oh my God, this is a blue one, this is a green one, this is a black one. It's a blue and green, here's the size of the lettering. Come on. Finally, I was like, I remember talking about, can't we just make this administrative, just remember, why are we looking at this stuff? You know, that goes, that would go in the category of operational efficiencies, right? It's not that it's not important, it is important. We want quality, we want quality, but maybe a little variety in color and variety in shapes is okay. That's what makes, that, commercial business district's vital.
Yeah.
Right?
And speaking of that, diversification.
For the company that has orange as their brand, right, or whatever.
Yeah.
Those are important visual.
And speaking of that diversity, uh, Spirit Elephant, Spirit Elephant that came to Winnetka about a year and a half ago almost started with COVID, but it's just on fire. Like me and my friends, we go up there all the time, we take takeout. It's one of the hotspots in Winnetka. And I see a lot of age diversity, I see a lot of race diversity in, uh, Spirit Elephant. So it's one of the best places and I feel like it's a niche, uh, niche, uh, re, uh, restaurant. And it's also catering to the vegan community, which is very specific.
Broader than here.
Yeah.
But to that point, what I love about that restaurant in particular is they're very good with their social media. If you don't follow them on Instagram, you should. It makes you very hungry.
But the other thing is, is that they really are a destination in the Chicagoland area.
Yep.
So you will see that they have influencers who are posting eating, and they're coming from Bronzeville or all over the Chicago.
You're coming up from the city all the time.
Right, right. I mean, it's, it shows you, because, you know, for the longest time, you hear from national retailers, you can't locate in Winnetka, because half of your potential market is in the lake. And that just proves that mindset wrong, that if you have something, whether it's Bunny Bunny Babe, or Valentina, or Spirit Elephant, if you have a business that is savvy with their marketing, and is good at tapping into it, people will come. And it doesn't mean that, you know, you're losing half of your zip code.
Yeah, especially also if you're using omnichannels. So it's not only your dining in, but there's Grubhub, there's Uber Eats, there's pickup. It's, yeah, it's really good.
So we talked about the State of the Village report, and, you know, really, there are parts of it that need to be updated. Not only do we need to go back around and ask people, but there are things that are objectively out of date now. You talked about housing, which was the, the two concerns we heard were, nobody can sell a house, and we have a million empty storefronts. Now, we still have a couple notable empty storefronts, but I drove around the other day looking for a place to put some signage. And there aren't that many. So that, so we have some new exciting things that have happened, and, you know, maybe we can fan the flames a little bit.
I also think there's like a bigger, maybe this is my perception, it feels like there's a bigger, or not bigger, there's a little regional economy going on here. There's a lot of dynamics going on between Glencoe and Winnetka and Kennelworth and Womack. We're, we're all grooving and moving between all these restaurants and places all the time, and that's a good thing. I think that's a really good thing. It broadens our perspective. I've had a couple of friends who said, you know, they were downsizing, they're looking in Glencoe, looking in Womack, they're not just going to stay here. But they don't feel like they're really leaving, their friends, because it's a bigger economy right now. And it never used to be, it used to be little silos that you had to pass streets to go into another one, so it's getting, it's getting a little different.
You got a whole, you got, you have a whole huge group of people that are not going downtown.
That's right, that's exactly.
They're just not going. It may have, it may change when the city is safer, but I, I can't tell you, I, I have very few friends that go out of town if they don't have to.
Yeah, and, and the good restaurateurs, like Sophia and, and Pam Roy, they're realizing there's a untapped market, and there's a lot of disposable income. This is where I want to be. It's also operational, you need good people operating, you can't always blame it on the store, and blame it on the village, and blame it on the permit process.
Right.
Sometimes the operators are bad, or they merchandise bad, or they don't social media very good.
But I think this, it's an interesting point about where people choose to move. And if they don't go to the city, they may still be attracted to the concept of walkability and density and not having to drive. And it makes me think that the, surprisingly, the AARP website is like an entire tutorial on new organism, on walkability and advocacy for that. So it, it's, it's very interesting, because I mentioned the eighty-nine year olds in my life. You know, driving is not in their best interest. And so as people age in place, and if they can age in their community and be taxpayers and contributing members of the community, and be able to walk around, because density allows you to go downstairs and walk across the street and get coffee, there is a benefit that you can, I think, take advantage of a, a situation where people are not wanting to go all the way to the city.
Yeah, I think that this also, as we were talking about a bit earlier, gives us the opportunity to sort of steer some of these habits that people have developed, and kind of nurture them here. Because, talking about going to the city, I mean, I remember we would always go down to the city for any, like, we were going to dinner as couples, or with girlfriends, or, you know, to meet people. And really, nobody wants to drive, nobody wants to get on a train anymore. And so that really has kind of allowed.
Chicago.
Well, I think we all.
Winnetka doesn't exist without it.
I'm still down there at least once a week, but, you know, but the idea of every dinner has to be a dinner downtown. We can, you know, we can kind of nurture the idea that people want to do, you know, what is it that we can look at? I know for us, as a younger family, we like to go to any restaurant that we can ride bike to. And really what that means is, if we can get on a bike and go down Green Bay Trail and get off, and that sometimes it absolutely is like, I'm like, we can just kind of get on the Green Bay Trail, it's very easy, kind of how we can go up there. Or we can get on the Green Bay Trail in those certain places in Winnetka as well, or even down in Womack, you know? But looking at sort of how that works, and how we can nurture that, and keep that as a community, keep this, this area viable, is important.
Well, I think those restaurant groups that want to invest in building out a restaurant, like taking a cappuccino glass and entering it.
That's, that's a big investment.
It's huge.
And if we could get a restaurant, like, successful Sophia's Steak. And I know there are other restaurants that do that as well. I think that's amazing, the opportunities that other restaurant groups see, capitalizing on that.
Do they, Brian, Brian, to, to the point of the restaurateurs that are coming to town, what are they asking for in terms of, is it, is it a difficult permit process for them to go through? I mean, it always seems to take them a long time to build these places out, or is it just them? I mean, I, I don't, Chris is nodding, it's them. Like, I don't understand, like, why, like, sometimes I'm looking at, why does it take, this is just me walking the dog around at night going, why is it taking so long?
Like Boris Cafe, right, in the empty lot next door, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the developer's been in several times, and that's kind of a special situation.
I think it'd be kind of interesting, maybe you already, you know, so the woman brought Connie over to us, she came out of the hotel, right? And you, you mentioned that we're kind of like this regional area. It might be interesting to get input outside of Winnetka. Sure, she said, you know, people are coming, you know, they're seeing it on social media. It would be cool to be more of a destination for them. To the extent, like, we can get some input from restaurants and businesses that have made the move, but also go to Fulton Market, go talk to, you know, Stephanie Isard or some of the other, you know, chefs, Sarah Grinberg. And, and ask them, you know, what would it take for you to open up in Winnetka, what would you pull an interest in? It just would be interesting to hear, like, because that's what's working really well for them. We don't have enough density in Winnetka to support the kinds of things that people in Winnetka want. That is not going to change. We can wish it to change, I, I've, you know, the density, she's something I've been bringing up for years, I would like to see more density. It's not going to happen realistically, it's all built out. It, with, there, there's some pockets where we might be able to achieve it, but the reality is, people here want that stuff that's downtown. But we can't support it with just Winnetka.
No, we just poach from one another. I mean, what happens is, each restaurant poaches off the neck, so you wonder who's going to go out first, right?
Yeah, we gotta figure out, like, how do we attract more talent out of this? How do we get more, because that creates the draw, and then when they're here, they see the other stuff, you know?
To that point, I thought it was really interesting what Alenia was doing, I think it was Alenia, when they were doing their dinners delivered to Chalet, right? And then they would, I don't know, did you guys picture? Yeah, the takeaway.
Yeah.
That was a fascinating, I would say.
Yeah, I heard it, yeah.
Garden Center.
I think they were very, very successful at that. I mean, I, I don't know how much money they, I don't think it was like a home run, but I think they.
No, it's a home run.
They must have learned a ton from that, because they started doing that in Arlington and Heights and Princeton. And it's almost like, okay, that's, it's hard, it's Michelin star restaurants, but obviously they're very innovative and creative thinkers. And to talk to them and see what do they see? Was that just a pandemic went off?
So I've worked with some of these restaurants.
Yeah.
And some of them, the well-known ones, and, and they have figured it out.
Right.
And it does make a lot of money. And so I, I don't think we would fall in debt here, here staff.
If I could just say one more thing, you know, I, I think that the world is cyclical, and it may not always exist the way it's existed the last eighteen months. And we have to remember, this is Winnetka twenty forty plan.
Yep.
It's not the twenty twenty-one plan, so I think we can throw out the baby with the bathwater and all of this stuff, you gotta do in half, put more value.
Yeah.
But I think we have to kind of merge, what do we want Winnetka to look like in forty, how do we?
That's a fundamental question, what we want it to look like. One of the things we were asking people, and we've talked to other people about in communities, and the word density is scary, but it means a lot of different things to lots of different people. Sometimes density is, it's referred to as buildings. Buildings, and they're tall and they're big, and there's a lot of people, and that's not necessarily what density is. Density can be a number. And one of the questions I would ask everybody here is, let's look out to twenty forty. How many residents would you like to live in Winnetka with us, or not?
It's been the same number for at least five.
It sure has, it sure has. Should it always just stay that same number? Now, think about the cost of living, the cost of operations, the cost of taxes, should we just keep it the same? Or should we invite and welcome in five hundred new people? That's density. We gotta figure out where we're going to put them, and what they, what kind of housing they live in, maybe they'll live in the same houses, maybe they'll be in accessory dwelling units, maybe they'll be in an apartment building. I don't know the answer, I'm not pretending I do. But it was always a question, is do we want more people to be part of our community, or we just want to tap it out and say we're done with this? Because I've worked in some communities where that's the benchmark for doing comprehensive planning. And it's based on, we expect to grow to another two thousand people. Therefore, we have to figure out how all of our facilities, our utilities, everything, keep up and physically can connect with that number in the future. We don't operate that way. We operate on, it's always been this way, this is the number of people we have, and we figure out how to balance it out at the end of the day. But the costs are only going to go up, they're never going to go down, we know that. Things need to be repaired, replaced, utilities, schools, that, so I ask the question, not as being facetious about it, but really like, do we want to welcome some more people in this town? I know what I would say as a resident, but I'm really curious as, as a leadership circle, because that's a question that has to be built in to the thinking of a long-range plan.
At first, I'll just say, I personally like density, but practically, we're not, we're never going to move the needle that much, even if we devoted ourselves. And you will get people that won't support.
Of course.
But you look at the one Winnetka experience, right? That would have added a little bit additional population, but not much. And we have a strong desire to preserve things, you know, accessory dwelling units, I like them. If everyone had one, we're going to have a bunch of, you know, maybe we, you know, how many households do we have, like?
Five thousand or something.
Yeah, we are, maybe, it's like four thousand, five hundred something, right?
Yeah.
If everybody put in a, a little shed in their backyard, you know? I mean.
Tiny house.
You're not going to substantially change the population of Winnetka.
No, of course not.
You just shut it down last weekend, didn't you?
Yeah, I know, right?
But I do think density in some core areas, like our business district, which is why I like, you know, the kind of open discussion, you know? Maybe we'd get more density there, but probably not, because we've got these building owners whose families own the buildings forever, they're paid for, so it's not, you know? I, I don't mean to be pessimistic, I'm just saying.
No, no, it's fine.
The only way we're going to get the density that we want, that most people find pleasing, which is, you see Boris's, it's packed. You see people out walking around, you know? It's probably going to be people coming into town.
If you wanted to get there, you'd find a game plan to get there, and the market would find a way to make it happen. And if I were a developer and had my creative mind on, I'd be scum around looking at anything here that could just susceptible to change. Like, I walked by and looked in the door of the AT&T Switching Building the other day, I'm like, what the hell's in there? A bunch of, like, what a great loft building that would be.
And it's not going to be needed, right?
What a great old loft building that would be. And then you walk down here, and there's a little sliver of land at thirty feet, why, you can't do anything, but maybe that could be some funky little three, three-story deal. That's got all kinds of hair on it. I asked you about that one.
Not anymore, it's going to get all up.
I know. But, I mean, if you really look at, there's a lot between Hubbard Woods and here and down by the train station, it wouldn't be hard to get five hundred, really, you, you, Rob, you got?
He's got a question.
Uh, not a question, just a, a data point.
Yeah.
Census data was released, and.
Can you go up five hundred people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did we really?
We went up four point six percent.
But most of them are about this tall.
And.
Woo!
And went up five hundred and fifty-four people.
So, so that's most, it's less density, because they don't take up much room, you know?
But, but here's my real point is, you'd never know, nor would you care, or nor would it change how you live or how anything else is. Because there's other controls that keep the sense of community character in place. But the people is, to me, people is the density number. The rest of it is a gamesmanship of how you control the character of the place.
And, and you know, Scott, I think, I think probably the most important thing about the density discussion isn't so much the numbers as it is.
Feel.
What you, what hole are you filling?
Yeah.
What's the purpose?
Yeah.
Because I think what I've learned over being in this conversation for a while, is density for the sake of profiteering?
Not going to work.
Doesn't carry much.
No. Yeah.
Growth for the sake of.
Doesn't work here.
Right.
Yeah.
But if, if, if there's a purpose, a reason, and, and it's filling a gap that is acknowledged, and it's, it's, it's providing something that is clearly labeled by this whole exercise as being desirable, then I think the density discussion changes. Because really what you're doing at that point is, is filling an order for the community, rather than filling the checkbook of the developer.
It's a strategy.
Yeah.
I have a comment about, D and D jokes about, they're all about this big, which is.
They are.
Pretty much true. When you're having these conversations with these new movers, are, what kind of conversations are you having around our school system? I know the referendum to the past, a couple of years ago, when I, I did not grow up here, I have three small children. I remember walking, I love the schools now, I think they're wonderful, but I remember walking into Hubbard Woods and thinking, geez, this is the fancy town schools. And I grew to love them, but I'm wondering if they're aware of these young families, what their expectations are for the school, and this is what they could provide to the school, or whether they want to be part of the plan.
I think we could fashion questions along that line. I think you gotta be careful about, talking about referendum to young families.
For sure, right.
Because that'll scare them, or they're already probably shocked.
Or just ask, maybe ask expectations of, have you been through our schools yet, if you don't have a kindergarten age child?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you know about them? Do you know about our progressive school system?
Right.
Do you plan to send to public, do you plan to send to private? I think that will lead some, lead to some answers that people are wondering. And then for density, to Chris's point about what are you trying to solve with this, or what's the goal? And I don't know if this conversation is for now or later, I personally would also love to see ways to attract more diversity, both socioeconomic and racial. That was my other concern when I lived in Winnetka, is the lack of both of those, which I'm sure we're all aware of. I, I don't know how to solve that problem, but that, if there's a more dense stuff moving forward, that's, that's the goal I would like to see.
And I would, I would agree with that, and I think when we talk about preservation, we talk about this idea of preserving these older homes. I mean, we are just seeing anything and everything, I've now got something of lockdown, a leave that's a lovely home, that is, again, you know, probably a million, that would attract certain types of, you know? That's not some kind of extraordinarily inexpensive home, but it's now yet again going to be docked down for something that's going on the market that's suspected three point five. You know, so what kinds of families are we saying we're willing to move in? Is there an exception to dividing different lots, smaller lots, smaller homes? It doesn't necessarily have to be, as we talked about that, sticking everybody in the high rise as well. You know, what are our solutions to that? Too, because I think that it's, it's just such a shame, you know, with people coming in, can you sell your house? Well, yeah, you can sell it, but all of these things that are coming in are just, I mean, any, you know, really needed in terms of what our house is.
That's, I think, the point of the variety of housing stock, right? Because if, if a village had only housing that served only families at the peak of their earning and the peak size of their families, you're only going to have that kind of population, right? And so Jane Jacobs would say, you need small, you need old, you need all that stuff to allow for a variety you can't even foresee. But the variety of housing stock, or buildings of any kind, allow for lots of different kinds of diversity, you know? I'm telling you guys that, you know that, I just like to quote Jane Jacobs.
Good flexing.
It's fine. Yeah, we should start.
Yeah, I was going to say, anything else we're missing, any other component? I would hope that if anybody has other thoughts or ideas, just please jot them down, this is, the conversation is just starting tonight again. And it's, the door's always open, there's no, no closure to it.
And send, send names, or ties to names, or leads for names, or ways to, you know, bribe people into joining. Because we're all, we, really, our purpose, and as Scott said, we're the, you know, outreach team. Our purpose is to be truly all ears, because, for two reasons. One, we get really good ideas from people. And two, we, we breed confidence in the process and the result, and ultimately, hopefully, buy-in. And so we need to seriously listen, be. And so we need to seriously listen, be seen as listening, and honestly weigh what we hear. And I think we have a good hope for, for really exciting stuff.
So Raj, we're updating the website and we're blasting out or putting out. When is that happening?
So the project website is being updated and that should be finalized sometime this week or early next week and approved by staff. We're also going to be promoting the process and the website in a very short, quick survey through, you know, we're going to be having big posters around the village in multiple locations to promote the website and the short survey. And we're also going to be at the farmer's market. That's going to be another quick hit, talking to, you know, pastors by. And ultimately, we will be gathering all of that information and feedback as Scott and Becky were saying, from the community.
Would it, would it be appropriate, and I don't know if you did this before, send us that kind of information? So if we wanted to post it on our Facebook, you know, circles next door?
Please.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I also forgot to mention, we're creating social media posts that will be blasting in the next couple of weeks and will be specifically...
So we can reshare?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we'll be targeting those and boosting those to Winnetkins specifically. So even if they don't follow me or they don't follow Dakota or the village, they'll still get those on their Facebook homepages just by the effort of targeting.
And if anybody has other lists or, you know, smaller groups of individuals, please, that's why we reach out to the Park District, because they have that list of all. And they're like, we'll give it to you. I'm like, great, that just makes our lives really easy.
Well, there's all those closed Facebook groups, like the Momses or Moms 60093. And there are odd preschool moms, right? The people who largely just move in, spend the evening, the babysitters. I don't know how I got involved, right? But...
How do you bring a ninja course?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. I heard somebody create an American Ninja junior course and I backed it.
We will be meeting with all of, and I didn't want to forget because I didn't check this back. We will be meeting with all of the commissions within the next month or so. I don't...
Yeah, I thought we were October, but I didn't want to get around us, so there's something else.
Anyhow, we're going to meet with forestry. We will meet with landmarks preservation. We're going to be meeting with everybody. So we'll probably see some of you again. But in the meantime, if anybody needs to get together, wants to talk about something, heard something today that they're just not really understanding or concerned about, find us. We're around.
And the website will have a portal for anybody to send any kind of comment they want to. You guys don't have to use a portal, but, um, yeah, okay.
Awesome.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, guys.
Harper's election, anything before we wrap this up?
Well, I guess, you know, you asked about the things that were new. And I'd say the fact that no one this past year has known today or yesterday is a really big deal for Winnetka because of I M E A, the huge impact that will have for Winnetka. So the other...
You know the other huge impact it has? We didn't give any of that $700 million subsidy that kind of, that Exelon is getting. So I'm a little frosted about that right now.
Well, I guess the opportunity there, of course, is what, what's going to happen to the park. It's, it's probably going to age out of existence anyway. So it's a huge opportunity there for Winnetka in terms of that development. That's, that's probably in the, in that time where I understand, what, every state will be operating past 2035, which is past our bond obligation. But anyway, that's a huge opportunity.